I apologize for the slight delay. At this point, we're going to call it to order and we're going to ask Council Lady Wooten to do the invocation.
Very quickly, as many of you already know, these last few weeks and months have been very stressful and difficult for all. We've been dealing with the pandemic. And recently, on the 31st of May, there was the tragedy, the one-year anniversary. And this past week with the death of Mr. Floyd, that's leading to the unrest and uproar all over our nation. And so if there's ever a time to pray, it's now. And so let's join in prayer for our nation and our city. Heavenly Father, we come before you as humbly as we can. Indeed, we thank you for your mercy and grace that you've allowed us thus far. Indeed, we live in turbulent, challenging times, but what gives us comfort is to know that you are with us, that you guide us, lead us, and comfort us. So as we know, the nation is in an uproar and angry. And so for that nation, we pray for peace everlasting. We pray for a community and a city that is continually to heal after a major tragedy. Pray for your continued encouragement and healing upon every person, every family. And for this council, I pray for strength and courage to continue to lead during challenging times and days ahead. Help us to be examples. Give us courage. Give us love. Give us peace. Help us to be a good example. And I pray for this meeting as we go forward, as we look at each agenda item. God, guide us. Give us wisdom and understanding and knowledge to make the right decisions that will be favorable for those involved, for our community. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have an order of business before we get started. In accordance with Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3712B, City Council will hold closed-session meetings at an undisclosed location within the next 15 days for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of City Manager. No votes will be taken other than votes to convene into closed session. Any vote to appoint a candidate to the position of City Mayor will occur at a subsequent public meeting, for which public notice will be provided in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Certification of the closed session will take place at subsequent formal sessions of the City Council. Okay? Now, if I can ask for certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have certified the closed session meeting in accordance with the motion to recess.
And with the council's permission, I'll read all of the minutes for one vote. Special session by electronic means of April 30th, 2020, special session by electronic means, May 5th, 2020, special session of May 7th, 2020, special session of May 12th, 2020, and special session by electronic means, May 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the minutes submitted.
Okay, I will now read the verbiage on the script for a non-exclusive franchise agreement. Pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2102, I will now summarize the bids that have been received for the non-exclusive franchise agreement for the purposes of constructing, installing, operating, and maintaining the company's underground overhead transmission lines, fiber connection and communication lines, facilities, and associated equipment to support the company's offshore wind need projects off the coast of Virginia. One bid was received. Kitty Hawk Wind LLC has bid the following: A 20-year franchise with two additional 10-year renewal options not to exceed 40 years. Are there any other persons that desire to submit a bid at this time? There being no further bids, the bidding is closed. City staff has evaluated the bid received from Kitty Hawk Wind LLC and recommends that additional public outreach and information be presented in the form of a public briefing, followed by an additional public hearing and vote to be scheduled at a later date. A public hearing was advertised for today's meeting, and although there will be another opportunity for public comment at a later date, is there anyone who would like to speak today regarding the proposed non-exclusive franchise agreement to install infrastructure and equipment on the city's rights-of-way for offshore wind energy project? Call for speakers?
I have two speakers, sir. The first speaker will be participating virtually, Craig Poff.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Craig Poff with Avon Grid Renewables. I'd like to thank City Council's consideration of this franchise agreement. You may be aware, this is a follow-on of the agreement we reached for sites in Corporate Landing and near Lanstown for the interconnection of the Kitty Hawk project. And we look forward to continuing our work with the city and its staff in creating what promises to be an economic development engine for Virginia Beach and the region. Thank you, and I'd gladly answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. Ms. Messner, you go back there to the podium.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. I oppose all of these giving away the right-of-ways of city land. And a 20-year contract with renewals, 20 is supposed to be the max for the city. So there shouldn't be renewals, they should have to come back. But regardless of that, speaking of access in our city, I got stuck in the Rudy Loop The way the city is, the traffic in the city is atrocious. There's gridlock everywhere. And when I got stuck, it was 8 o'clock. I had no idea, there was no warning from the police, that there was a protest. And I couldn't turn around and go back. So I really do care about access and right-of-ways and places to turn around to get away from dangerous protest rallies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messner.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, you know, once again, this item was prematurely advertised and is not on the agenda for consideration. As more public outreach will take place, an additional public hearing will be held at a future date. Okay, at this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we have the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval under the consent agenda the following items. Under ordinances and resolutions, Item J1, ordinance to declare easements at the corner of Market in Columbus Street in excess of the city's needs, convey easements to Stokes Properties LLC, and authorize temporary encroachments for a development of hotel at Town Center. Item J2, resolution to grant permits, Ray, allow emergency medical service agencies to operate in the city. A, American Lifeline Medical Transport Incorporated; B, American Medical Response Mid-Atlantic Inc; C, Cardinal Ambulance Services, Inc; D, Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters; E, Delta Medical Transport, Inc; F, Endurance Medical Transport, LLC; G, Life Care Medical Transports, Inc; H, Medical Transport, LLC; I, Nightingale Regional Air Ambulance, Inc; J, Reliance Medical Transport, LLC; K, Robbie's Ambulance Service, Inc; L, Special Event Providers of Emergency Medicine, Inc; M, Tywater Medical Transport, Inc. And, Mr. Mayor, noting, I will be abstaining on Item D of that 2D.
Yes, thank you, and I open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, Item K2, Martin &amp; June Kernut, the Kernut Family Revocable Living Trust for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray property record plat for existing single-family dwelling at 1413 Mill Landing Road in the Prince Sam District. Item 5, Codu LLC and Ocean Properties LLC for modification of conditions, Ray motor vehicle sales at 1159 and 1165 Lynnhaven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. Item 6, Justin and Margaret Miley and Christine Komnick for a conditional use permit, Ray residential kennel at 3253 Hungarian Road. Consent for withdrawal. Item 7, Suzanne Nicole Rupp, Travis Chester Rupp for conditional use permit, Ray home-based wildlife rehab facility at 1916 Kempsville Crossing Lane in the Centerville District. And so moved, Mr. Mayor. And also just to clarify, the reason I'm standing on Item D is that my, 2D is my wife is employed by Children's Hospital.
Did you read your deal?
Did I not read that one?
No.
My apologies.
Later.
Item 4, Judeo Christian Outreach Center Incorporated, conditional use permit, Ray residency facility, and modification of conditions, Ray group home at 1049 and 1053 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach District with the following change under recommended group home conditions, Item 2, that condition is changed to read, "This conditional use permit for the group home shall be subject to approval two years from, administrative approval two years from the date of the certificate of occupancy." So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a, we'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, can we have the roll call, please, on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse, absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, we're going to be going forward to the planning items. Now, due to distancing, we do have staff available, but they're going to be outside. If they need to be called, we can call them. Okay? Ms. Lahey?
Some of the staff are watching from the conference room, and if you call them in order to speed things along, they'll come in through the back door, so didn't want anybody to be shocked or scared.
Okay, not a problem. Okay, the first item is K1, Bechard Family Real Estate LLC for a variance to Section 4.1J of the subdivision regulations, Ray, subdivide the existing parcel into three lots at 312 Gatewood Avenue, District 6, Beach. And this was deferred from February 18th.
First speaker is Eddie Burdon.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, all the folks who are here on JCOC have approved on consent. Thanks. It's interesting.
Welcome back, Eddie.
I'm way back, back here, too. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of City Council. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the Bechard family, partnership in the Bechard family on this extremely unique subdivision variance application. Been doing this for 34 years and never, never seen anything quite like this before. And I've frankly seen cases where subdivision, re-subdivisions of property like this one have been approved and recorded without this radius on an existing street having to be dedicated. And that's why we are here. And again, not done one and not even seen one before. So the Bechards own this 15,000 square foot, 100 by 150-foot platted property that's 70 years old, at the corner of Gatewood Avenue and Parrish Street in the Gatewood Park subdivision. The entire neighborhood is zoned R5D. The proposed subdivision and the proposed development of the property is a by-right division and development on long-existing residential streets, dedicated right-of-ways, been there for, improved, I think, for over 60 years. Gatewood Avenue is a 60-foot right-of-way. Again, it connects to no other neighborhood. And at the corner with Parrish Street, Parrish Street is a dead-end street that goes approximately 444 feet in two directions, east and west. Again, will never connect to anything else. My clients are being told that their by-right subdivision, the corner lot, has to dedicate 22 square feet to, excuse me, 21 square feet to make a rounded corner on a 60-year-old street, one of which is 60 feet wide, is 10 feet wider than required for a residential street. The Traffic Engineering Department has stated, it's in the staff report, it was stated at the planning commission, there's no traffic reason, public safety reason. This, these streets are not going to be widened to the extent that this rounded, you know, corner is going to make any difference, whether it existed or not, it didn't exist. We offered, and it's one of the conditions of approval that was unanimously recommended by the planning commission, once the lots are approved, you know, we have no problem with giving the 21 square feet for the rounded corner. You have elevations of the buildings on the lots. The neighborhood is redeveloping. It's a good thing for the neighborhood that it's redeveloping. It's just a kind of a quirk in the interpretation of the ordinance about the design, which I think applies clearly to new subdivisions, that's not what this is. And there's really not a legal basis. We're not creating the need for this rounded corner, but my client said, let's just go through the process as we were asked to do. So the conditions that were all recommended unanimously by the planning commission are all acceptable to my clients, and I'll be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Okay, thank you, Eddie.
Thank you all very much.
The only other speaker signed up is Barbara Messner.
Bechard family, anyone who lives at the beach or they've expanded, it's all these high-density duplexes, and it takes up a lot of land. All the setbacks, the Form-based code that was created in 2012, that was before your time, Berluci, and before Ms. Abbott's time. Form-based code, it's just selectively amended for special people. And Bechard usually finances with Town Bank. But this is dividing one parcel into three lots. And it doesn't matter who owns the lot. We're removing trees, vegetation, and you have all these discussions on sea level rise and flooding, and you're just destroying the quality of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all the speakers. Mr. Burdon.
Okay, Mr. Tower, do you have a, okay, Mr. Burdon.
May I just say a couple of things? The houses meet and exceed, meet and exceed the setbacks. There's no variance, any setback. In fact, the setback from Gatewood is 24 feet rather than 18 feet. The setback from Parrish, the little 440-foot length street meets the requirements, and it could be set back five feet further if it mattered. The lot is cleared. The property has been cleared. So this is not Old Beach, and we meet all the requirements of the ordinance across the board except for this, you know, quirk in the interpretation of the subdivision ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a motion a second, and then we have discussion. Mr. Tower?
I move the adoption of the planning, of planning commission's approval. Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Moss?
Well, since Mr. Burdon called the staff's analysis a court characterization and their interpretation, I was going to ask this city attorney that kind of suggested it was without foundation. So is the staff's assessment and their analysis and their interpretation of the ordinance legally correct or not? The, well, the applicant suggests that it's not, that it's baseless. What I'm trying to understand, is it or is it not a legally supportable assessment as to the requirement and the correct interpretation of the ordinance as it applies?
I believe it is a correct interpretation of the code. I cannot speak to and would not contradict Mr. Burdon on how it may have been interpreted and applied in the past, but I do believe that it is consistent with the code, and that's why the subdivision variance comes before you.
Well, I just, I just, since there was some continuation at least that it was without foundation, I just want the record to reflect that in fact, it is with legal foundation, and that will be the basis for my no vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Tower?
Well, without trying to prolong this, it's clearly within council's right to adopt this variance. I don't think there's any question. It may not be administratively possible to do that. Am I not correct, Mr. City Attorney? Yes, sir. Council has the discretion to grant the variance. That's the, that's the specific nature of the application. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, votes open.
Oh, we have to call it, sorry. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
No, I'm not in favor of increased density.
Councilmember Rouse, absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 9 to 1, you have approved the application of Bechard Family Real Estate, LLC.
Okay, moving, moving on to planning item K3, Franklin Johnson Group Management and Develop LLC, Security Storage and Van Company of Norfolk, Virginia Incorporated, for conditional change in zoning from an I-1 industrial to conditional A-36 apartment, Ray development up to 160 multifamily units at 4545 South Boulevard, District 5, Rose Hall, deferred from February 18th.
First speaker is RJ Nutter.
Thank you very much, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. First time I've ever appeared before you in a mask. I've appeared before you on a walker, but never with a mask. It's a pleasure to be here. This is an application that comes to you with a strong amount of support and an amazing amount of outreach by the applicant in this application. But first, some of the specifics about it. The property today is owned I-1 industrial. In fact, it's a little hidden gem for industrial uses. We're just lucky that industrial user hasn't picked up on this property because it's right on the interstate. We could have some of the largest equipment, heavy equipment sales and stores located here like they do on Interstate 64 in Chesapeake. All that would be a by-right use on this property, along with many other M1 uses. But fortunately, the property has not been marketed in that fashion, and so Franklin Johnson Group put it under contract and are here today. So we're proposing an A-36 zoning, which as you can see from the zoning map, we're immediately contiguous to a vacant piece of parcel which is owned by the church right across the street, which is the Union Baptist Church. And then immediately adjacent to that, of course, is already A-36 zoned property. So the surrounding uses of this property are office, multifamily, and a cemetery, which is the basis of the use of that vacant land you see by the church. We have, we exceeded the parking requirements on this by your code. Significantly, this is located outside any of the ACUS areas, and that's significant for two reasons. One, we don't have an issue with density, but more importantly, most of the M1 parcels are located in areas where you want to have ACUS overlays, because that's where you want to stick your multifamily, excuse me, your industrial uses, not in property on the interstate that's outside of an ACUS area. So we're coming today, we're consistent with your comp plan, your staff has recommended approval. The planning commission recommended approval of the application. And at planning commission, we had a couple of objections to the traffic associated with this application and the stormwater. So I'd like to just briefly address those for you and let you know that, unfortunately, Rick Lowman's here if you want to ask him about the traffic, but his own study in your report indicates that even with this application, this roadway will be well below capacity, by, actually about 30% below capacity of what the capacity roadway is today. The second point they raised had to do with stormwater, Mr. Mayor, and quite frankly, this property today is, has no stormwater treatment whatsoever on it. And there's more, actually more impervious air on this property than you would believe, just based on all the hard surfaces they had to do for the loading and unloading of the trucks that came out on this site. But nonetheless, we'll be interjecting our own stormwater system, consistent with the city policy, and as you know, that brings water quality treatment for the first time that this site has ever enjoyed. And second, it will bring a reduction required by code of approximately 20% of the outfall from this property below what the outfall of the property is today. So it will increase, it will decrease the amount of stormwater coming off the site, it will allow it to be treated for the first time, will be under your traffic requirements, and completely comply with your stormwater requirements on this application. If I could, I'd like to allude about the outreach on this program, because we were originally scheduled to be here over several months, and we kept getting different dates from the staff because of the conditions that we're all facing right now. But I wanted you to know that in addition to reaching out to the owners, Mr. Jaeger, who owns some property immediately contiguous to this, certainly in the area, we met with him, my clients met with him. I reached out to the Union Baptist Church on two separate occasions, which is one of the oldest African-American churches in the city, met with Ms. Diane Walton, couldn't have been more gracious. We met with a YMCA just down the street, actually had two different managers come in and out as the application lingered on, Amy Logue and Laura Jackson, all of which had no objection to this, were perfectly happy with it. And also, my clients reached out to the owners and the agents with the Southgate Center, which is the office building directly across the street. So we've reached out quite a bit, and I want you to know that. That's important, not just for notice issue, but just in terms of public outreach. Finally, I'll tell you that we've heard late of this notice issue, and my client has had a sign posted on this property since December 6th, when we were first required to advertise this for the planning commission in January. That was deferred, and signs were posted again on January 10th. Signs were posted again on March 17th, because the dates kept changing. Signs were posted again on April 7th, based on staff recommendations for the dates. On March 26th, we changed the sign to read for April 21st. By the way, all this, this orange signs have been up there all this time. Normally, an applicant has to keep this up for 30 days between the planning commission and the council. We've had to contend with this for over six months. So in addition to outreach, I'm happy to tell you we've had this signed though. Now, we finally got the date for this hearing, I believe it was the afternoon of May 11th. My client put the sign up on May the 12th, which currently is up there today. I would tell you that when he went to put the sign up to change the date on the sign, on that date, the sign was down on the ground. It had clearly been vandalized. The sign itself was in perfect condition, but the poles on which the sign was arrested have been broken off, both of them together. There were no tracks on the road indicating how that happened, but the sign itself was perfectly intact. So we put the sign up, changed the date on that date, put it back up. I'd also add, the sign was consistently visible from the right-of-way, even though it was lying on the ground at that time. So my client, in my opinion, has more than satisfied the notice requirements with this, had enormous outreach to people in the immediate area. And I make point, someone told me about a Facebook post, I'm not on Facebook, my children don't like that, but anyway, I'm not on Facebook, but they told me about a Facebook post that showed people objecting to it, including notice standing beside the sign that read today's date. So I'm not sure how you object to notice on a sign when you're standing in front of it at any rate. We're happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, but we appreciate your support. And I want to thank the staff, they've done a great job making sure all the conditions were met here, that we had the outreach program, and for working with the city attorney's office on notice issues and others. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Nutter? I don't see any. Thank you.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Next speaker is Mark Richardson. Next speaker is Mark Richardson.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Richardson with Timmons Group, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on any of the civil engineering aspects.
Any questions at all? Okay, I see none. Thank you.
Kevin Martengale is the next speaker.
Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Kevin Martengale, local attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Jerry Yagan and Prison Plaza LLC to speak in opposition to this particular application. You've previously received some communications that talk about traffic. It may be true that the overall traffic count is below whatever the number is that is considered to be the maximum capacity for this road, but I think it's also an uncontested fact that when it comes to rush hour, there are people who have to sit through numerous cycles of the light that is on this particular road, and I would encourage you to first fix that problem before you add more cars. When you're talking about this many apartment units and South Boulevard being the primary road, there is going to be an even more, even more of a problem with regard to people having to sit through the light. That's not something you should be doing and encouraging by approving another use that is going to definitely increase the number of people. There is clearly a current flooding problem. I haven't seen any specifics to explain how that's going to be addressed. It's a severe problem right now. You've got pictures in the package showing it, and I think that that should be addressed and resolved before anything else is approved for this area, particularly something of this nature. Something that I thought was given very short shrift in the package has to do with school overcrowding. Independence Middle School right now is a hundred students over its rated capacity. This will certainly add more students. The guess is that it will be fewer than ten, but we don't really know. And as far as I'm aware, there has been no outreach to the school board, to the school administration at Independence Middle School, and nothing has been done to communicate with them about whether or not they feel able to absorb yet more students before there's a reallocation among the other middle schools. So once again, I think the cart is in front of the horse, need to figure that out. The setback issue, they are proposing to go from a thirty-foot setback to a ten-foot setback, and it was a fascinating justification. They said, well, we're adjacent to the Pembroke SGA, so because we're near it, then we want to adopt those standards, which allow for zero setback. I can't believe that I'm reading a staff report that says that close is good enough. That's like saying, well, I live next to the Cavalier Hotel, so can I have a bar too? That's, of course, ridiculous. You drew those lines years ago, presumably with a purpose. I printed it off and I studied the outline, and I don't know all the logic that went into it, but you did it. So if they want to change that, if someone wants to change those lines, change those lines, but change them in a way that is comprehensive, not on this piecemeal application by application basis. That's not the appropriate way to do it. And then finally, to the sign issue, which is an important notice issue, I picked up the application that is filled out to get something like this approved. And on page two, the very first substantive page, you'll see that there is an explanation under notice and hearing, and it says that the applicant must place a sign which may be picked up at the planning department, and it must be done no less than thirty days prior to the planning commission public hearing and must remain in place until after the city council action. So thirty days before planning and continuously through that period of time, all the way through this meeting, that's the rule. Then you page down a little further in this application, and you've got an entirely separate document, Planning Commission/City Council Sign Posting Instructions and Information in bold print in a box, "Failure to follow and adhere to these instructions will result in the denial or deferral of your application." Failure to do what is required will, not may, will result in the denial or the deferral of your application. Once again, they're advised, it must be done thirty days in advance and it must be up continuously. And you even give this advice. "We strongly advise you to check each day to be sure the sign is in place." Mr. Nutter, very qualified, experienced attorney, but I highly doubt he's going to come up here and tell you that he personally checked every day. Someone on behalf of the applicant needs to come forward and make that representation to you, that they checked it every day and they can guarantee you that it was up every day, because the folks I represent are going to tell you there were weeks where there was no sign. And why does that matter? Because they have been trying to keep all of the neighbors informed as to when this was eventually going to come in front of you. How can they do that? They didn't know when it was going to come in front of you. You couldn't check on the city council website and figure it out. It was impossible to know. So everybody was counting on the sign. And then finally, with approximately twenty days before this meeting, a sign went back up. So it was down for long periods of time, it was up and down and up and down, the dates kept changing, and then finally around twenty days in advance, it went back up. Some of the other speakers will explain to you why that matters. They spent a lot of money for a prior hearing to send out postcards encouraging people to come out and speak, whichever side of the issue they were on. They were fair about it. They said, come out and speak, say whatever you want to say about this particular project. But here, with a very shortened period of time, they've been unable to get the same level of word out, and that's particularly challenging, given the circumstances that we're all operating under right now. So let's be clear, this is a mandatory requirement, it's a rule that you gave. A rule that's not enforced is a suggestion. So you're going to send a signal today. It's either a rule or it's just a friendly suggestion. And I would encourage you to treat everybody absolutely equally with that particular rule. It's not that hard to do. If you care enough to build a hundred and sixty apartment units, you can send somebody over there on a daily basis to make sure your sign is up every single day as required by the rules. And as I said before, there's an easy way to fix this. If someone on behalf of the applicant wants to get up here and represent to you that they checked every single day and the sign was up every single day, then maybe you can believe them, and maybe you'll reject what my folks are going to say. But my people are going to come forward in a moment, and they're going to tell you, that sign was down for weeks on end. That violates your rules. That means according to what you've said, it will be either deferred or denied. I have, I stand here for any questions you may have, otherwise, thank you for your time, particularly under these difficult circumstances.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council members. It's a pleasure to be here speaking in person.
Let's, let's.
Okay, don't start my three minutes. I need all my three minutes.
Very good.
As per usual, I come with visuals. South Boulevard floods, it floods tremendously. These are recent photos from April and from February, and people are having to go up to their wheel wells to get down South Boulevard. I'm speaking on behalf of Stop the Flooding Now, where I'm a volunteer, and we were very much surprised that there was only twenty-one days' notice, that's what we counted, about this meeting happening to discuss this. One of the key people who wanted to speak at this meeting had made other plans, did not expect this to be happening this date. So it's very inconvenient for our community in the Stop the Flooding Now Facebook group to find out about these things so late. You all campaigned and went to retreats and said flooding was important, let's fix flooding. So why are we pushing forward with this when we don't even have a stormwater report? It's not required, but you could ask for one. Stormwater is a huge problem over there, and this stormwater goes right under the road and over to Thalia Creek, because I was over there looking at the site and ran into the Timmons stormwater person. We have four developments that are all dumping into Thalia Creek, and it's not a big enough bathtub to hold all the water. So when the flooding comes, it's going to be very bad. We hope it doesn't come, but we've already heard from Ms. Sutton today about how many storms we're going to have this year, and if you go ahead and push this through without giving us adequate time to get a stormwater report and find out what's really going to go on, you're just sealing our fate for more flooding. We've got City View Two, which has somewhere, I'm told, around two hundred and nineteen apartments going in, and that's making a lot of impervious surface. We've got South Boulevard here with a hundred and sixty units, Thalia Wayside, where they want two hundred and sixty-one, and Bonnie Road, Mr. Cutchings is building office buildings. All that goes into Thalia Creek. It's too much water for the bathtub. You guys are not looking at this quantity-wise, and you just got new stormwater recommendations. You look, need to look at it quantity-wise. I've been talking to the EPA and DEQ, and they gave me the code. They told me where to look about the water quantity, nine VAC twenty-five dash eight seventy dash sixty-six. I'm reading it. I'm trying to become a stormwater expert. I want to know everything I can about MS four and our rights as citizens to have good, good stormwater quality and quantity. I hope that, you know, you understand how important it is to save us from flooding and not to go back on what you talked about when you all campaigned and went to retreats. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have will be virtual, Bob Elms.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Bob Elms, president of Prince of San Plaza Civic. If you will, let me reference the planning commission meeting of January eighth of this year, when the planning commission approved the application. Fifty minutes into the meeting, the application is addressed. Now I would like to make reference to some of the comments made. Water runoff will be reduced by about twenty percent. Not very, not very much. Flooding will minimally exacerbate it or exacerbate it. I couldn't understand what the Johnson man was saying there, which word he was using, but they both mean about saying. Their solution to flooding control will be the application of gutters and curvings, and will be installed, and it should, he says should, ameliorate flooding in the right of way. As I see for, when you add stormwater control facilities to the project, that does not have them, flooding gets better. Okay? I expect, number five, I expect, I expect the drainage for this project will be addressed. The decision to approve this application during the planning commission public meeting was made mostly on conjecture and that developer will do the right thing. As the property stands now, it is approximately two-thirds wooded. What any reasonable person would call a permeable lot with about thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six square feet, or six percent being impervious surface. The remaining ninety-four percent is grass, woods, and crush and run. If this CPU is approved tonight, about ninety percent of the ninety-four percent of permeable surface will be covered with foundation asphalt, and I think that's being generous. The developer plans to, to date, the developer's plan to date is to allow twenty percent stormwater retention and eighty percent released on the South Boulevard, according to the planning, what he made the planning commission statement. Ditches and Thalia Creek, subwatersheds, Thalia Creek, Thurston Branch, and Pecan Creek, all this water along pollution will be allowed onto South Boulevard and into the ditches will also make its way to Windsor Lake and Lake Trashmore by way of Thalia Creek and the ditches along South Boulevard. To give you an idea of the amount of water leaving the property with one inch of rainfall, imagine the amount of six-point-nine railroad boxcars will hold that are about fifty feet long. That's a lot of water, six-point-nine.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening. Yeah, this is Rose Hall, and I believe there's conflicts with the company. I believe it's tied to Venture, which is Town Bank, and they're tied to BlackRock Global. They're one of the top stockholders, and they're famous for gentrification, which is, you know, building high-density projects. Some of these things overlap. I need to bring up one thing. I email all of you all the time. Mr. Tower, you're my rep for Beach District, you've never replied. I think Mr. Berlucci's replied once and Ms., Ms. Wooten once. You know, y'all are hired to respond to us. Okay. How can the city fail to fix air-crumbling roads, flooding, major crime, which I think everyone knows that we have major crime that y'all, you know, aren't, haven't handled or prevented for a long time, and now we have, you know, additional major problems? We have problems with traffic? And I've lived lots of places in the beach. I used to live here in, in Birchwood, which is right near Thalia, and it's really a nice neighborhood, mostly residential and very family-oriented, so I'm in opposition.
The next speaker? Thank you. Is Chris, Chris Fattipol? The Tippel? I'm sorry. I probably just messed that all up.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Tippel. I live in Kempsville, and I work on South Boulevard in the Rose Hall District next to the property in question. I manage two office buildings on South Boulevard. First, I would like to say I'm very disappointed in this item being heard tonight, as the citizens of Virginia Beach were not given the appropriate thirty days' notice of the city council hearing date. The sign was down for several weeks. I work adjacent to the property. The sign was put back up approximately May thirteenth. I have called many people, I've written most people letters, trying to find out why. The planning person assigned to this application, Mr. Dowell, told me that he notified the applicant on May twelfth of the new city council date. If he just notified the applicant on May twelfth, there is no way thirty days' notice happened, and there was no sign up prior to that for several weeks. I moved to Virginia Beach about seven years ago to get away from density in a neighboring city. I remember driving to the Virginia Beach Oceanfront as a kid, and as our family drove over what was then Independence Boulevard, down Interstate forty-four, getting ready to pay the twenty-five cent toll, we would always look to the right and say, oh, look, Mount Trashmore. Our parents made us really excited we were headed to the oceanfront. That view's going to change if this is approved. I'm not sure how many of you visited this location, but I drive it every day. I cannot imagine five, five-story apartment buildings, each taller than Mount Trashmore, on this small parcel, less than five acres. The request before you is to approve this four-point-nine acre parcel for A thirty-six, that's thirty-six dwellings per acre. That's pretty dense. The municipal code of Virginia Beach, Appendix A, Section six hundred states, it is not the intention to create additional A twenty-six, A twenty-four, or eighty-thirty-six districts to enlarge the limits of existing A twenty-four or A thirty-six districts, except in cases to promote infilling in areas already zoned similar. Why is it okay now on South Boulevard? Our commercial real estate agent has told us it's going to make leasing or selling our office buildings more difficult. I was here in these chambers in January to speak out against this rezoning request in front of planning. Since that planning commission meeting, South Boulevard, directly in front of this parcel in question, has flooded not less than four times. I've taken a few photos. I'm also not on Facebook, and I've never taken a photo in front of a zoning sign, so it wasn't me. As I stood there, cars took turns driving over the crest of the road just to be able to navigate South Boulevard. The wakes have lapped over the parking lot of the South Gate Center. Although it may not be required, I do not believe even a preliminary stormwater analysis of this project has been done, or at least not shared with the public. The recent COVID pandemic has many people working remotely, so traffic hasn't been bad over the past several weeks. But back in February, even before Mount Trashmore Park was busy, Edwin Drive was backed up all the way to Mount Trashmore, waiting several light cycles to get through. This has forced many drivers to cut through Independence Business Center or worse.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, a question from Mr. Moss.
Sir, if you could return to the podium, I just sense you are a frequent traveler.
Sir, if you could return to the podium, I just sense you are a frequent traveler of the road during the peak times, and you were dressed in the, Edwin Drive being backed up going towards Kemsville, but do you often, often transit the other way, going towards Independence at Baxter Road? You know, you can turn left and go out the light, and then you can go across.
Baxter, South Boulevard to Independence?
Yes.
I do transit that way.
Okay, you mentioned earlier about Edwin. So on that particular road, pre-COVID, and I assume you probably leave at five-thirty, six o'clock, something like that?
No standard time.
No standard time. But in your time in random viewing, what is the relative backup using the church as a reference point from the light?
The, the backup, it is sometimes very bad to the church, if not further, caused by traffic on Independence Boulevard not allowing cars to move when there's a green light on South Boulevard. So traffic on Independence is such gridlocked, cars on South Boulevard cannot leave, so there's several light cycles, and you can't go anywhere.
Well, I appreciate you offering real-world, on-the-site assessments. Thank you.
And we did meet with Franklin Johnson Group. They were very cordial, and we have, this is not against Franklin Johnson. We did meet with them, and we have nothing negative to say about them at all. We do appreciate them sitting down and talking to us.
I just appreciate you filling in the gap between the theoretical and the actual. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gerald Yagan.
Sorry. Thank you. I don't have a lot to say. The traffic is bad. I don't leave at five o'clock because you can't get out at that time. And so I really hope that this is not approved. This is not a good move that y'all have been thought about doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Natter.
Thank you very much. First, appreciate all the speakers, but would like to comment on a couple of things that you've, you've heard. First, we talked about stormwater, as was mentioned by several of the speakers, and it's always a shame to me that the public doesn't understand you have a very strong stormwater management ordinance that you're required to comply with when you submit your site plan. So those studies and that process takes well over a hundred thousand dollars by the applicant in a typical situation, and that's just the cost of the study, the review, and the plan to create it. So I can guarantee the public that until that program, that process is complete, nothing to be built on this site. That program requires exactly what some of the speakers heard, which is a water quality introduction for the first time on this property and a twenty percent reduction in the amount of water coming off the property today. I think I heard one speaker, and it seemed to indicate that he felt like we were putting twenty percent of the water on our site and eighty percent of the water on the street. That's not true. Whatever the water coming off this site today is, we have to reduce it completely by twenty percent and have it treated for the first time. So no matter what happens, the water quality and the water quantity coming off this site will be reduced, not increased. Second, I'd like to talk about traffic for a second. Mr. Moss, I, I travel this road quite a bit, I must tell you. I'm a frequent visitor to the YMCA down this road, and so I will tell you that on occasion there are trouble at the light de-venticated. I have never, except when there's a funeral at the church, have I ever seen a backup like was suggested, but I've never been there at five-thirty, so I'm not contesting what the gentleman said. But I can tell you, just about every intersection in and around town center, all the way out to Edwin, is pretty blacked up between five o'clock and six o'clock. That doesn't mean we stop all development, all traffic, and all improvements. It means we try to study it the best we can. So I stand by your staff's report that this is still under, well under the capacity of this roadway, and that's how we judge every other application that I've been involved in. Finally, I'd like to talk about, if I could, the setbacks for a second. We, the setbacks in this case, you have seen many cases where your staff has asked us to move the buildings up against the right of way to hide the parking so it's not visible from the public right of way. We've done it all over this town, whether or not we're in a district that requires that or not. That's all that's happened here. The building's been moved up so that it hides the parking from the back. That's our compliance with staff's request. And finally, with respect to notice, I would just tell you that I've read the code. I am perfectly comfortable that the signs have been posted. I would tell you, I don't think there's a single applicant in the city that checks a sign every day. I don't think it just happens. And I wish it, I'm not sure it's even required, but we are required to keep it posted, and that's what we've done. And the indication too is that it's provided to your staff, the seven different times this sign was posted. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr.
I just had a question, if I could, of Mr. Stiles or the City Attorney's Office. The, can you just clarify the issue regarding the posting of the signage and the law and everything, because I've heard different things here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor. Your sign requirements are found in Section one oh eight of the city zoning ordinance, and I want to start off by telling you that your requirement is over and above the notice requirements found in the state law. State law only requires notification by publication two consecutive weeks in advance of the hearing, along with a mailing to every abutting property owner. I don't believe there's any question about that notice. Your code, the Section one oh eight that I just mentioned, goes above and beyond that, and it requires that a sign be erected, and I'm quoting, not less than thirty days before the Planning Commission hearing, which will be the situation in this case, or if none, the city council hearing. It then goes on to say, and I quote again, "Such signs may not be removed until the city council has acted upon the application." And it further goes on to say that it is the council that determines whether or not the requirements of this provision have been met. If you conclude that they have been met, then you have the same discretion that you always have, which is whether or not to grant a continuance or a deferral. If you find that they haven't been met, then it says you shall defer. Now, with respect to this particular fact pattern, I think the question that you as a body need to consider is whether there is evidence that the sign has been removed for some period of time. The evidence, or the, 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 the speakers told you it was posted thirty days before the Planning Commission hearing, which was the requirement, and then the question is whether or not it was removed, and it is for you to determine whether if the sign was blown down or knocked down or whatever, but it remained there, whether that equals removal. I, I believe it's within your discretion to make that decision. If you conclude that it wasn't removed, then you have absolutely every right to go ahead and consider the application on its merits today. I will also point out that your, your same ordinance says that any person having actual notice of the application for which the sign is required or to whom written notice was provided may not, by reason of the notice, challenge the action that this board takes or this, that the, the council takes. So that's probably more than you asked me, but I wanted to give you the complete understanding of this code section because this issue is coming up several times as a result of COVID and the fact that hearings have been moved off. The one other thing that I, that I factually would remind you of is that although the sign has to be up and although it has to contain the date, it doesn't say that the date has to be posted thirty days in advance, and in fact, given your practices over time immemorial, that often doesn't happen because it could never happen in any case where the Planning Commission hearing was less than thirty days prior to your hearing, which is, as you know, something that occurs quite frequently. So I just offer that so that you have context for the decision that it is the bodies to make.
Mr. Moss.
So I want to follow up on that. In that someone read something that the city creates, agents for us, meaning the city staff, that said something more restrictive than the statement you just read, if that document is correct. I don't have it in front of me, but maybe Mr. Kevin Nightingale can provide it, but if that truly isn't a city document and the city staff, who is an agent for us, is communicating to the public an expectation that is more restrictive than maybe what the legislation grants us, it's also a question for us, is do we feel a moral obligation to be bound by people who make representations on our behalf, both to the applicants and the public, that's more restrictive than the discretion that we have? So my question is, was that document as read the actual document that the city provides to applicants and to any citizen that asked?
I'll have to defer to staff to answer that question.
I can just provide that. I would love to have that and read it myself as well. If you could step forward and provide that to the city clerk, please, while the staff responds.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, can we get a motion in a second? And Bobby, do you have a clarification on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moss, the application that's being referenced is an old application that has been changed on the actual Planning Department website. It's actually in a different format. It is, it is a different style application, so I'm unsure of when that was pulled from our website, but that application has been shortened and is different than what is, what is in your hand at this moment that is available on our website.
Well, do you have a copy of what up there now and when that was posted?
I have it in front of me. I do not have a paper copy, sir, but that is what I pulled right now from the website, but I'll find out if I can find out the date.
And do you know which application was actually given to the applicant when he filed?
I will look.
You're going to, I think these are material questions. That's why I'm asking. They're facts and evidence, and I don't necessarily have.
Based, based on the disclosure statements, it has the same format as the, as the current application that we have available on the website.
And the content is the same?
Oh, I don't, I do not have the full application in front of me, so I apologize.
Well, maybe while we're, while we're discussing it, you can, you can discern if that's true.
Let me just clarify that. So you're saying that the application they filled out is not the one that was read?
Correct. That is.
The one Mr. Moss has in his hand is not the one that they filled out?
Correct. Based on the, just based on looking at the formatting, it is not the same application.
I'm trying to find out what the content is of what they actually got, because I think that's material.
Can you put it up there?
I will try.
Thank you. That would be great.
Okay, at this point, can we get a motion in a second, then we'll go into further discussion. Mr. Berlucci.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just want to thank everyone who took the time to be here, the applicant, as well as Mr. Yagan, Mr. Tippel, members of the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League, neighbors, and others who have been experiencing a lengthy discussion about this parcel. I live very near to where this property exists. I drive South Boulevard every day, so it impacts me as well. The principal objections raised during the discussion relate to flooding, which I think has been addressed at a reduction in stormwater flooding. It relates to traffic. It's been demonstrated that the roads around this parcel are operating under capacity. And, and by right, an application could, or a, a, a person could build an industrial use here with bare minimum landscaping, with more impervious surface, with heavy machinery, with motors, with noise, large parking lots, lots of employees. And so I think this is an improvement, and I will move for approval at this time.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second discussion. Mr. Moss.
With all due respect to my colleague from Rose Hall District, I do want to revisit a couple of things which I think have been overlooked and understated, to say the least, and not considered.
Before Mr. Moss begins, there was one important point that I failed to make, and that is the matter of notice. That was the, the third principal objection, which I think has been adequately addressed by Mr. Stiles and others. So I apologize for interrupting, but that was an important point that I also wanted to make. Pardon me, Councilmember Moss.
I think the issue of notice is yet unclear until we see the actual application that was filed by the applicant. We are uncertain as to that factual statement, but I want to go back to the fundamental flaws of the application itself. First of all, the staff never established that IT use wasn't the best use of this property and the current basis for the city in terms of the attractiveness of limited industrial property in the city, especially as we start to move people off of Cleveland Road as we expand it, and people could be nearby, and maybe it has greater high-income potential than the apartments themselves. Secondly, I think this was a point Mr. Kevin Nightingale made. They're asking for a zoning that shouldn't be permitted at this location because it's not in an SGA. They're asking for A thirty, one hundred and sixty units. Clearly, when he cited the plan, he was correct. This isn't in the SGA. This wasn't designed to be a density for this location, even if you thought apartments was the right answer. A thirty-six is the wrong material solution. So I think that can't be just easily dismissed and say, oh, well, the land use plan's got it wrong, and really, we've expanded the SGA, and we can have these kind of apartments. The apartments that are adjacent to it are not A thirty-six. I'm sure you've been out there and looked at them. And certainly, no one took into account that rush hour and people really are trying to move, and I've been out there as well. It's backed up life cycles, and for those people, it is inconvenient when you're adding three hundred and twenty cars per those timeframes. So I don't think that's insignificant as to who's bearing the cost. But let's just go aside and talk about some comments that were made. And he said, well, all the roads are crowded in the area, and so we don't let development change the fact that roads are overcrowded in the Pembroke area. Well, I have to say, past decisions didn't care, but we should care because people are paid for a certain level of improvement, and then we rezoned away. So I don't think that the fact that everybody else is suffering, that we should say, oh, it's okay that more people suffer. I, that's kind of a flawed logic, but I can understand if you're an advocate for the applicant, you certainly will grasp any straw that's available. But let's go on and look at just putting things. It's one thing to put a storefront. Now, go and look at the Walmart that's ten feet from the street. It's just a big wall. No one actually goes in there. It's just a wall about a hundred and something feet long on the Boulevard. You can look at other locations. The entrances don't abut with the hotel on Independence, but we're talking about putting living conditions where people live, and we're consciously going to say we're putting them right up against the roadway. And we think that that's what we would pick. We think that's a good standard to set for the community, that because we do it everywhere else, which is not true everywhere else, but we have done it many places, which I've talked about, not very effectively, I don't think, to hide the cars. So we hide the cars to put people closer to the road noise when there's established factor about road noise and its impact on individuals, which means you can never open your windows because all you hear is the air being displaced by tires on the highway. And I'm sure all of us will run out and get those apartments. So I think we have an obligation in the community to set a higher standard than that for residences, which is why you may recall last week I mentioned, go take a look at some of the other apartments and some of the things that are on Shore Drive, which they do by, is that really what we want to encourage, and is that the standard we want to set? Because the comment in here is, the staff is agreeable to the request to develop this property with a reduced front yard setback. The staff thinks that, but what do we think? I hope we have a higher standard for ourselves and for the people who are going to live in these facilities. This is a bad choice. This is not the standard we want to set to put people in their living conditions. I'd rather have their car, and I'm sure they would too, further, closer to the road, so they're further from the road. So for some person's aesthetic is another person's environmental consideration for their property, always having to have their windows closed unless they just like to hear tires displacing air on the highway. I don't think that's where we want to go. And in other cases, zero setbacks. And then they talk about it's adjacent to the SGA. Well, kinda, but, you know, Tucson's kind of adjacent to the Grand Canyon, but not exactly. I mean, it's, I think it's just a stretch. When does the boundaries matter? I think we have to ask ourselves, when do these boundaries matter? And what do people who live around, you heard a property owner who's there managing commercial property, I think his view has some meaning. So why isn't the density less? Why isn't the setback further back? You know, we're allowing someone else to say, if we're going to make an exception, we're making an exception to the lowest possible standard and try to dress it up with landscaping. I, I don't think that passes the test. I don't think analytically this thing is sound. Now, I hope maybe sometime we hear, before we close, we can find out, well, what was the application? Because I think there was a defective note, especially if that language is in what they signed. Hopefully, we're getting close, then we'll know. It's in fact, does the applicant have an obligation, even if we don't have one, we've created one through our agent to provide continuous, and they have an obligation to check it every day. So I think that issue is not resolved, and benefit of the doubt shouldn't go to the person proposing change. Benefit of the doubt should always, and legal precedent always goes to the status quo. And so I think the applicant hasn't met the test of notice. Obviously, the city attorney has told us we can ignore the statements made by our agents, and that's probably true, but the question is, is the right moral answer that we should? And we always say, sorry, residents, you're the least able, you're working full-time, you're not being paid to watch everything, but sorry, the process works against you. Verdict is, you get something you didn't want. I just don't think that's the right signal to send. I disagree with my colleague. I don't doubt his motivations. I don't doubt his motivations. I just look at the set of facts and draw a much different conclusion.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tower.
Just one question about Mr. Moss's statement. Did I hear you say that the apartments adjacent were not A36? Am I looking?
When you go and look at them, there's no five-story buildings there.
I'm just looking at the map that's here in our book with the, it appears that they are A36, the ones that are.
Well, drive by that road, and I don't see that density there on that property. Have we, do we have the content of what they actually got?
Bobby, do you have a response?
We do. The, Mr. Tower is correct that the existing apartment complex is zoned conditional A36 at this time.
But is there A36 on it?
The.
It certainly doesn't look like when you drive on that lot.
I believe they're three and four story, three story. I drove by it this weekend. I'm trying to remember.
Three, they're not four.
Three story, three story multifamily units. A36 does allow, depending on what the conditions are of that existing use, for a use that's similar to the application that's in front of us.
Yeah, I just don't think that's what's on there. But can we see what they signed?
The, what they have signed, if we can have them show Howard's screen. It's the new application, which is not the application that was provided. That was an older application if you scroll through, Howard. It just has their contact information and their request. Because that, I believe it's when we were audited, prior to my timeline, we had information in applications that were not correct. We went through this process of revising the applications to make sure they align with the code, which is why it's not in that format anymore.
Can you go back so I can just see what it does say?
Howard, thank you.
So there's no notification requirements or posting on that. I can't read that from this far away. I don't see any requirements about posting on that application. Is that correct?
No, sir. We have the blank application, if you'd like to see that. But this is the application they filled out. I do have available the blank application, which has a checklist, and it also does not note the, it does note posting requirements, but it does not have that same statement that was in the previous application that you have been providing.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, I think that does solve that factual issue for us. I'm glad you complied, so I don't, I withdraw, I mean, withdraw obviously now we know factually what the answer is. And so I think probably people act on old information, but doesn't change the fundamental fact, what the comprehensive plan says, and this information doesn't comply with the guidance in the comp plan for this location.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any other discussion?
Mrs. Henley. I really appreciate the pros and cons that we've heard. I know the flooding is a concern. And, but if this project is redeveloped in any fashion, it would have to meet the standards, and so that would have to be improved. But I think this question of I-1 or A36, I-1 is a pretty heavy use. And to me, that's not compatible with this A36 that's next to it and perhaps the church across. This is, this development that is there now is an old project and sold. It's certainly probably going to have something much more intense on it. I think probably the A36 is more compatible with that area than an I-1 built to what I-1 can be built to. It can be very incompatible with residential, and so that's what we're choosing between. So I'm inclined to go with the application.
I have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
Because I thought earlier we were briefed today that applications that were already in the process prior to the adoption of the new standards came under the old rules. Is that not correct?
Bobby could answer, but I'm pretty sure this has been evaluated under our existing standards, not new ones.
I just wanted to make sure that people know the new standard.
New standard, but the standards as, as they were read, which would require that it be improved from what it is now.
That's correct. So it'll, it, there won't be required to meet the requirements of the proposed Public Works Design specification standards. The state did update their stormwater requirements two and a half, three years ago, which is a much higher standard than what was previously allowed and throughout the city. So it will, as the applicant has stated, the existing site does not have to, does not currently meet any of those standards. This site will go through a rigorous civil engineering review to meet those requirements.
Okay, Mr. Jones and then Ms. Abbott.
I agree with what Ms. Henley just said, but I just wanted to address the posting of the sign issue. I received two different emails about that issue, and each time that I received the email, I went out there to look, and the sign was there. So I, you know, I'm not questioning what the people said in their email. It may not have been there when they went by there, but they were there when I went by there. And so that tells me that the applicant or their representative or has in fact made the effort to post the signs, the sign on the property to give public notice, so.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott.
Bobby, I don't, I have a question. I just want to get clarification. And the email that you sent to me when I, that I asked on Friday, it was represented that the applicant will need to fill in and pipe the existing ditch on South Boulevard. That's correct?
That is correct.
And they'll make, need to make right away improvements?
Correct.
Okay. And then they're required to have no additional impact, correct? They have to either improve or maintain?
That is correct.
Okay. And there, there's a model that has to substantiate that, that we review before any development is built?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Wilson.
One of the people that I respect the most in this whole city is Mr. Jerry Yegan and what he has done in our city with the museum. And he has a beautiful building there on South Boulevard that I have visited many times. And Jerry, I truly respect you and what you've done. And I'm going to vote for this and support this, and I hope you'll understand. I do think that the water quality is going to be improved, the flooding is going to be improved, the idea of industrial next to your beautiful building of what could go in there. And if these folks are going to sell, they're going to, they could sell to someone who could put something much, much worse in there than this. So I'm going to be supporting this, but please know how much I respect you and your opinions.
All right. At this point, anybody else? Okay, if we can do the roll call for them.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Before I vote, I wanted to just make a remark in regards to my colleague, Council Ma, Ms. Moss, because I really respect his opinion, and I think he always adds valuable thoughts to the conversation. But I wanted to justify why I'm voting today, and I'm supporting this applicant, not because of anything more than we have a challenge in our city that there are not a lot of places to put these types of developments. And I feel right off the interstate is a good location. It will have the least impact on changing the makeup of neighborhoods. And we do have a housing issue that we need to address, so I'm voting aye, and that's why. Thank you.
Councilmember Berlucchi?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to one, you have approved the application of Franklin Johnson Group Management and Development LLC.
Okay, the last ordinance is K8, and its ordinance is to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, the Virginia Beach Resort Area Strategic Action Plan 2030, and amend sections 1.1 and 1.2, Ray Resort Growth Area, as amended on pages 41 and 42. Reschedule from March 17th.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Now, Mr. Yegan's Military Aviation Museum is one of the top rated things in the city. I really respect him and what he's done, and the nine one, anyway. Before I read this on the comp plan, Ms. Wooton, I didn't see any of y'all at Sunday, but the victim families, you know, were there, and I just think there should have been a moment of silence for them. And, you know, I think there were some legislators there, but not one of y'all showed up Sunday, which was the actual anniversary. I'm not surprised at how y'all vote and how you, but the comp plan 2030, there were two add-ons. We haven't had time to get in touch with y'all. It was advertised without those two add-ons. This is major changes, and this comp plan is 2030. It shouldn't be considered for so many reasons, but the city has cut staff, overall city staff, including Public Works, Parks and Recs. In January 2018, there were 9,000 city employees. It's down to around 7,000 or 7,500, and there are a lot of part times. And as far as the signs, I take pictures of the signs when they don't show up. I'm sure when they knew you were coming, Mr. Jones, that they, you had staff put a sign out. I take pictures when the signs aren't there and when they're hard to see. I worked with Sea-Tac for five years on the arena deal, Owls Creek. We have almost $3 billion debt, and the city isn't replacing all of the city's staff. The city should not own and lease so much property and be controlling like real estate brokers and, you know. Ms. Wilson has been in real estate for decades, and they finance with Town Bank. Anyway, the failure group did a lot of work, and I'm really ashamed that y'all pushed that through. I'm ashamed of a lot of things that y'all do. Thank you.
That's all the speaker, sir.
Okay, at this point, do we have a motion?
Ms. Approval.
Second? Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I won't be voting for the amendment only because I'm, would let me, would let the public believe that I'd be willing to let some cost analysis say that there's a value in denying the public their last open space at the oceanfront. And I have said publicly and stand by it that there isn't any economic analysis that would tell me we should develop Central Park or the Grand Canyon or the Rudy Loop. So the reason why I'm voting no on the amendment is because I don't, would not honor the words that are being put in there for the amendment, and I'd be sending a false signal that there's somehow, that there is some way, some analysis would tell me that the public value, intrinsic value of Rudy Loop as open space is subject to some cost benefit analysis, and that's not the case. So that's to maintain the integrity of my position, but I certainly respect the position of Mr. Tower. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Tower.
I would just say I equally respect Mr. Moss's opinion, but I believe that it would be irresponsible, and that's why I proposed the change, not to consider the options of redevelopment. This property was acquired for that purpose. It doesn't mean we have to do it, but it was acquired for that purpose. I don't think anybody disputes that in the acquisition. And there, there may be, I don't think we can predict the future. I don't think we know what the options and what the needs of the city are going to be at the time that this is developed. So I respectfully support, support the motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if we can.
Sure. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucchi?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse, absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm going to vote aye, but I do support Rudy Loop being a park.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to one, you have approved the ordinance to adopt.
Okay, we have no appointments, no unfinished business, but if I could end by saying that yes, due to COVID-19, we were unable to gather to honor the victims and the many victims, you know, of the tragedy. And, you know, I just want to echo what Mrs. Henley said before about the beautiful tribute that our staff put together to honor, honor the, you know, the, all the victims and everybody in Virginia Beach. And there was a moment of silence, but I just want to say, we look forward in the future when we can once again embrace the people that we will continue to embrace in perpetuity.
Well, the staff did a wonderful job, and you and Jim also did a wonderful job. And having the municipal center all lit up in blue was really beautiful.
And a special shout out to Julie Hill and her wonderful staff and all of the staff that really, you know, produced this. You know, I think it's reflective of the quality of the city that we live in. So with that, I say thank you and God bless you. We are adjourned.[1759.36]